Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We ask everyone if you would please come in and have a seat. We are ready to start our Tuesday, February 5th, City Council meeting. We ask that you stand for a pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Councilor Chamberless tonight.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we pray? Lord, we come before you tonight and we just thank you for how you've blessed us as a country, you've blessed us as a city. We just thank you for the opportunity that we have to come together and govern ourselves. We thank you for that freedom that you've given to us. We ask that you help us to never take that lightly. Lord, tonight, we just thank you for the work that you've done in this situation in Midland City and bringing this little boy back to his family. I just can't imagine the things that he's been through, but we ask that you help him and encourage him and just put those actions out of his mind and move forward with his life. Help us as we do the business of the city tonight that we would do it in a manner that would please and honor you, and it's in your son's name we pray.
Amen.
Madam Clerk, will you call a roll, please?
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Chamberless.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
Here.
Call this meeting to order the character trait of the month is forgiveness, clearing the record of those who have wronged me and not holding a grudge. I think we all can benefit from that. Do I have approval of the minutes? City Council meeting, January 15th, 2013. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So, Mr.
I have a motion on the floor by Counselor Chamberless. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Sterns. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Those minutes have been approved. At this time, we're going to have comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. Anyone would like to speak on any item on tonight's agenda?
Yes, sir. If I might ask for a point of privilege?
Yes, sir.
I have three guests I'd like to have come up. The first one is actually Officer Louis. Louis has been with the Prattville Police Department for quite some time, and he is at retirement age, and I know it's a... We have employees throughout our great city retire from time to time, but not too often are they canine. And he has given quite a bit to our community, not only in goodwill throughout all the different schools that are inside our jurisdiction, but also his activities, his efforts to help fight crime, and also enforcement of drug enforcement. So I just wanted to present this to him and thank him for his due duties and also his handler, Wayne Barlow. Thank you.
Thank you.
(Applause). Thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you.[231.12][231.12](Applause). Like I say, I know we're an animal-friendly town, and Louis has met quite a few students during his tenure, and we do appreciate his services. Well, at that point in time, I'd also like to ask our YMCA officials to come up. We have Little David Lewis. Little David Lewis, if he comes up. A lot of us, and I would have presented this at the last council meeting, but Little David Lewis was under the weather. So I hope you brought a doctor's appoint...
(Laughter).
Okay. But, you know, the YMCA has been part of this community for years and years, since 1963, I believe. David McDowell has also been touched by the YMCA. Also, there's been a story told by the previous director about the birth of David and some other stories, but I won't go into that. I'll just make this short, as short as I can. It's a commendation to the YMCA. Whereas 1963, a group of citizens came together and began planning to start a YMCA in Prattville. Soon, a board was formed, a chairman and executive director was selected, budget was approved, and promotion for the Prattville YMCA began. Whereas Prattville YMCA humbly began its operations in library building in downtown with only two offices and used equipment. There were no official YMCA facilities, but programs were offered anywhere around town where it was available. Whereas 1965, preparation began to raise funds and construct Prattville's first YMCA facility, just a few years after a second pool was added along with tennis courts and gymnasium. And whereas in 1979, land was donated to the YMCA for what would become the location of the new Willis Prattville branch. 1983, 32 acres of land adjacent to the main building was gifted to the Y. Whereas 1985, a fitness center was opened. Fitness center was a success, and a capital campaign was completed to construct a new building to house a fitness branch and childcare building, along with a major renovation of the Don M. Smith Building. Whereas during the next several years, athletic fields were constructed, fitness branch was expanded, and a pavilion was built at the east side. The Don M. Smith Branch Pool was covered for year-round swimming and planned for fund lines for a full facility branch in East Prattville. In June 2000, the new facility was completed and opened with two pools, two gymnasiums, an indoor playroom, cardio studio, exercise area, and licensed preschool with four classrooms. Whereas today, the Prattville YMCA continues to bring families closer, encourage good health throughout the community through fitness, sports, and fun. And for the 50 years, they have focused on family, healthy living, social responsibility, and youth development. And I think also they have partnered up using, utilizing the city of Prattville as a conduit to help bring a miracle field to this area. And I do salute you and commend the Prattville YMCA for all their efforts. Thank you.[431.84][431.84](Applause). Did you want to say anything?
(Inaudible).
I'll never turn down an open mic. I just want to say thank you on behalf of the YMCA, to the city of Prattville, to each of you as council members, and you mayor, and all your staff for the support you give the Y. I'm relatively new professionally at the Y, but I've been involved as a parent and a member for quite a while, and I know what the Y means to this community, and it's an honor and a privilege to be a part of this Y. And I know so many people in Prattville have done so much to help us to be where we are today, and I just want to say thank you to the citizens of Prattville for their support. And we look forward to even brighter future as we move into our next 50 years, and I just thank y'all for the opportunity to be here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Appreciate it.[502.22][502.22](Applause).
Well, I do want to reiterate on that is that David Lewis and Parks and Recs Director Kelly Cook have already been working together to see what programs the city offers, what programs they offer, and that way we are a good partner for the city of Prattville. My last point of privilege, if I could have EMA Director, Mr. Baggett, to come up, please. He was gracious enough to come today and introduce himself to our department heads, and I had not met him till today, and I didn't know if our city council had met him previously, but I'd like to let him introduce himself and look forward to a good tenure with you.
Absolutely. Again, my name's Ernie Baggett, and thank y'all for having me. It was a privilege to be here earlier today, Mayor, and we look forward to continuing the relationship that EMA has developed with the city and continue to develop that. We... I know that there's a tough act to follow here with the two people that I... The two groups that I'm behind there, that's kind of tough to wrap that up, but again, just wanted to say thank you for allowing me to be here, and it is an honor and a privilege to serve all the citizens of Otoga County, and I really look forward to doing it. I know that we've had a great staff over there, and I'm very lucky to be a part of that team. Thank you.
Well, I will say that you do have a great staff. They have done a great job, everything from the SERC program to helping keeping us very aware of all the different weather as it comes in and out in this area. So if you can just keep it above us or below us, we'll all be fine.
That's Christmas, sir.
Okay.[604.88][604.88](Laughter). Well, thank you. Well, I'll go ahead and move along into additional report. Today, earlier around lunchtime, a group of the department heads and city councillors and myself attended a press conference today with Jim Wilson Associates Corporate Office. Their announcements today were that Chappie's Deli, Canuckins, New York Diamond Company, and Republic Finance have signed leases. They also have Beauty Nails and Spa, and New York Diamonds are now open in that division up there. We also have a video of the press conference online if you want to get on it. It's... I do recommend that you watch this press conference because they had... They did give some hints of some national anchor stores coming in and that they're still in negotiations with, so I think this is great news for our community. Not only, you know, the last two weeks we've been very, very busy. We've had a ribbon cutting recently at Frostley, which was actually the second meeting we had there with them, but it actually brings forth about approximately 100-plus jobs to our area. The announcements today at the high point is approximately 120 jobs or so that they anticipate to be coming into that area. So then, you know, to me, that's just another step showing how much closer we are to the economy, really hopefully getting back to where we really need it to be. Some further good news is our accounts payable is approximately $2,000. Couple of years ago, it was approximately... It was over $2 million. So I think we've done a great job there. The group health account has been also in the area of highly watched line item, and at one point in time, we owed approximately 1.8 millions on that line item, but as of today, we are actually paid up through February with our healthcare account, employee healthcare account, and we actually have an account balance of approximately $2 million on that, which two years ago, we had about 20-something thousand in the account, but we owed 1.8. So we think we've made a great big turnaround there. As I move along, I'm going to talk some about the agenda tonight and the different resolutions. I hope I've rednumbered these appropriately. Resolution number two or number six, depending on how you guys decide to handle it. It's a long time... It's a long-needed update of our 1994 personnel policies. It will also help update our promotional policies, and as you know, I've temporarily put a freeze on any promotional in some of our departments there, so if you could move along with that, that will help our HR department and myself help run the day-to-day activities of the city. If you move forward with resolution three or number seven, we'll start realizing an annual savings of about approximately $8,500 with our medical hazard disposal. Also, councillors, if you know, I've spoken in the past that we are a mechanized, service-oriented business. With that said, even though we're in the beginning of February, spring and ball season are just right around the corner. With that, we have other projects and so much going on that we really need this either seasonal help or the replacement of a full-time person on resolutions four, five, and six. Resolution number nine, or 13, talks about a new phone system, which that would provide a savings of approximately $3,800 per month. The original budget amount two years ago was a little over $200,000. I think it was about a quarter million dollars, actually. This current budget, we budgeted $70,000, and where that $70,000 has not reached the full amount that we need to move forward with this phone system. This phone system is needed very, very much so, and the additional amount of $18,000, if you will amend the budget so we can move forward on this. I think it's just another area to show how Doug Mosley's done a great job saving the city money managing our IT department and also along with the finance department that he's over. I'm also proud to say that the audit should be back from Jackson Thornton in the next several weeks. The preliminary findings that we have been shown to me is that we have... Last year's budget, we actually came in $1.9 million under budget. There's no credit I can really take there. All I can really say is that the department heads, the department heads and the employees are the ones that really have helped push us along that line, and at this point in time, I'd like to give department heads and employees a round of applause for that.[887.43][887.43](Applause). Thank you, guys. I know it's been a tough road over the last two years or so, but it just goes to show that a lot of hard work, not only by the department heads and the employees, but also by the council. You know, it just goes to show, if you do put your nose to the grindstone, you can get some things done. So I'm very, very proud of that. I'd also like to ask that at the convenience of the finance committee, sometime next week, if you could call another committee meeting, we'd like to discuss further refinancing of certain bonds. Finance Director and myself are ready to meet and bring some new and updated information that should be very beneficial to our community, and maybe we could get that refinancing of the bonds, which will be a large savings to the city over the life of the bonds. It's been predicted to be over a half million dollars in savings to the city. Really, it's about $600,000. But anyway, at that point in time, at this point in time, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anyone have any questions, comments for the mayor, complaints? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Again, I want to take this opportunity along with the mayor, and I know the council does also, to thank all the department heads for all that everyone do for the city of Prattville. Congratulations again to Mr. Lewis and Mr. Baggett, and we hope that Louis have a fine, successful life in his retirement. With that being said, on tonight's agenda, we had a consent agenda for the public's sake. There will not be a consent agenda. These items will need to be discussed, as he alluded to in his discussion. Those new numbers will be from 1 through 15. So if you would just number your items, ladies and gentlemen, from 1 through 15, everything on your agenda. Thank you. Resolution number one is to reappoint Larry Puckett to the Water Works. Counselor Sterns, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the vacancy currently exists on the Water Works Board due to the term expiration of Larry Puckett on September 30th, 2012, and whereas it is the desire of the Prattville City Council to fill that vacancy to ensure the continuity of the board's operation, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that Larry Puckett is hereby reappointed to fill the vacancy effective immediately and said term will expire on September 30th, 2018, or until his successor is duly qualified and appointed. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Bowles. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That resolution passed. I'm in such a hurry tonight to move with this agenda, I need to backtrack with report from council on special committees. So do we have report Counselor Striplin?
No, sir.
Counselor Brown?
Yes, sir. We had a street committee meeting on January 24th to continue the discussion of developing a traffic calming policy, and that's still ongoing. So we'll be meeting again, but it'll probably be March before the next meeting.
Counselor Starnes?
Yes, sir. We had a vehicle maintenance committee. Kenny Rollison gave us an orientation of the operation within the vehicle maintenance and its goals for the upcoming year. This included a walk-through of the garage and the lot, and I look further with working with Ms. Rollison.
Counselor Chamberless?
Yes, sir. We're going to have a judicial committee meeting tomorrow at 4:30 at City Annex.
Counselor Bowles?
Yes, sir. We had an IT meeting and a fire meeting. Resolution number 10, we'd ask that y'all move forward with that to surplus various equipment. It's just older stuff that's been sitting around, and we need to clean up a little bit. We also asking that we move ahead with resolution... I'm sorry, that would be resolution number 14. And resolution number 13, the new phone system. This will be a cost savings over the next two years. Will pay for itself from what the current phone system cost us a year, so I'm asking that we all approve it to move forward with that. On the fire committee meeting, we would ask that we move ahead with number seven. It would help us... Basically, what we're doing is getting rid of one vehicle, going to a trailer. Little cost now saves us a lot of cost over the year and over the next few years because we don't have insurance, don't have E.P. keep gasoline and all that kind of stuff to take care of. And also, resolution number 11, to surplus one vehicle from the fire department. We also approve that and would like to move forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Boone?
Yes, sir. The Leisure Services Committee met on Friday, February 1st, where we discussed the splashpad, and splashpad negotiations are ongoing, and a lot is being done. We are going to meet again on Wednesday, which is tomorrow, at 4:15 at Doster Center. Leisure Services Committee, that is open to the public, and we will continue our discussions of splashpad. Also, we are looking at several hiring opportunities on tonight's agenda, and I realize it looks like a lot of money when you look at a lump sum and when you look at a lump number of employees, but what these departments are coming up on, and these departments being leisure services and urban management, is high season. We're coming to grass-cutting season, we're coming to weed-eating season, we're coming to needing lifeguards, to needing lots of seasonal employees, and so what we're asking, while it looks like a large number, is actually a savings plan to the city because we are hiring seasonal-only employees, which will be a short-term employee who does not receive full benefits. So we're saving the city money by doing short-term employees in numbers as opposed to a full-time who is receiving insurance and benefits. So I ask that you move forward to staff our departments, even though we will not be fully staffed. This will just really give us a kickstart to the high season, so please keep that in mind tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll continue with our agenda now. Item number two is to reappoint Ernest Goodson to the Electrical Board. Counselor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Whereas the vacancy currently exists on Electrical Board due to the term expiring of Edward Goodson on May 16th, 2011, whereas it's desire of the City Council to fill this vacancy to ensure the community of the boards operating, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that Ernest Goodson is hereby reappointed to fill the vacancy effective immediately, and said term will expire on May 16th, 2013, or until his successor is duly qualified and appointed. I so move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Boone. Any discussion on this item? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. This resolution passes. Resolution number three is to appoint Jimmy Morris Jr. to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Counselor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the current vacancy exists on the Board of Zoning Adjustment due to the term expiration of F.J. McCready on April 30th, 2012, and whereas it is the desire of Prattville City Council to fill the vacancy to ensure the community of the board operation, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that Jimmy Morris Jr. is hereby appointed to be filled the vacancy effective immediately, and said term will expire on April 30th, 2015, or until his successor is duly qualified. I so move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Point of privilege? Or do we need a second? Okay.
Need a second for the discussion?
Second.
Have a second discussion. Counselor Bowles?
Mr. Morris could not be here today, and he's been out for most of this week. I'd like to hold this for another two weeks until he can get with all the council members and introduce himself for them to have a chance to talk to him.
Set in the form of a motion to hold?
Form of a motion.
Have a motion on the floor to hold for two weeks. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Striplin. Any further discussion on this motion? All in favor of holding for two weeks, signify by raising your right hand. Item number three will be held for two weeks. Resolution number four is to grant a retail beer license off premises only and retail table wine license off premises only to Chatel Patel of Om Shift LLC doing business at Corner Market. Counselor Starnes, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Whereas Chatel Patel of Om Shift LLC, a corner market, has obtained a business license located at 299 North Memorial Drive in Prattville, Alabama, which is a retail store, and where has the owner of the said business has applied for an off-premises-only retail beer and off-premises-only retail table wine license. Now therefore, it be resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby approves the issuance of an off-premises-only retail beer license and off-premises-only retail table wine license for the business located at 299 North Memorial Drive, Prattville, Alabama, to Chatel Patel of Om Shift LLC, a corner market. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Striplin. Discussion?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Starnes?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to hold this for two weeks so it could go before the police committee.
Have a motion on the floor to hold this item also for two weeks. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Striplin. Would be any further discussion on this item? All in favor of holding it for two weeks, signify by raising your right hand. This resolution will be held for two weeks. Item number five, is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign a settlement agreement with Knowledge of Montgomery Incorporated to collect unpaid franchise fee. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas Knowledge of Montgomery Incorporated owns, operates, and maintains a cable television system in the city of Prattville, Alabama pursuant to a cable television franchise ordinance, and whereas Knowledge has merged with WOW Internet Cable &amp; Phone, and whereas pursuant to the franchise agreement, Knowledge remits franchise fees to the city, and whereas local government services conducted an audit of Knowledge's franchise fee payments to the city of Prattville and determined that Knowledge underpaid franchise fees to the city, and whereas Knowledge disputes the amount claimed, but the parties have entered into a settlement agreement to resolve all unpaid franchise fee, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the mayor is hereby authorized and empowered to sign the settlement agreement with Knowledge of Montgomery Incorporated to collect unpaid franchise fees. Mr. President, I so move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Striplin. Would be any discussion on this resolution? Each of you should have document attachment one of that Knowledge contract before you. No discussion? All in favor of this resolution, signify by raising your right hand. This resolution passes. Resolution number six, is to authorize the mayor to enter into agreement with the Center for Business and Economic Development of Auburn University at Montgomery to review and update the city of Prattville personnel policies and guidelines at a cost not to exceed $18,500. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Human Resources Department has identified a need to review and update the city of Prattville personnel policies and guidelines, and whereas the city desires to retain the Center for Business and Economic Development, CBED, of Auburn University at Montgomery, AUM, to provide the services outlined in the attached memorandum of agreement, and whereas CBED shall be compensated for the services provided at a cost not to exceed $18,500, and whereas such compensation is a budgeted expense, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the mayor is authorized and empowered to enter into a memorandum of agreement with CBED for such consulting services. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in an amount not to exceed $18,500 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to CBED, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2013 budget line item, Human Resources Training and Development. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Chamberless. Would be any discussion on this item? Mr. Chamberless?
I'd just like to encourage everybody to support this. I've already run into one situation already in my short tenure where the outdated language on this really caused me a problem, so I would suggest that we update these policies.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. This resolution passes. Resolution number seven, to award bid number 013-001 to West Med Disposal Incorporated for the Bio-Hazard Waste Disposal Contract for the Fire Department and annual cost of $5,130. Counselor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville Fire Department has a need of a Bio-Waste Disposal Contract, and whereas three bids were lent for the Fire Department for said contract, and whereas one bid was received, and West Med Disposal Incorporated was the lowest responsible bidder with an annual cost of $5,130 for said contract. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the dollars for said contract, now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby award bid number zero-one-three-dash-zero-zero-one in the amount of five thousand one hundred and thirty dollars to West Med Disposal Incorporated for the biohazard waste disposal contract, and said funds are approved and appropriated from the FY two thousand and thirteen Budget Line Item Fire Department Medical Supplies. Be it therefore further resolved that the City Council hereby authorizes and empowers the mayor to enter into contract with West Medical Disposal Incorporated for biohazard disposal. I so move.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Boone. Would be any discussion? All in favor signify by raising your right hand. This resolution passes also. Resolution number eight is to authorize the hiring of one heavy equipment operator for the Engineering Department Street Division at an annual cost not to exceed thirty-nine thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars. Council Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas there is a need in the Engineering Department Street Division to fill a vacancy for one full-time heavy equipment operator, and whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville has implemented a hiring freeze, and whereas the annual cost of hiring one heavy equipment operator will not exceed thirty-nine thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars for salary and benefits, and whereas this is a budgeted position in the Engineering Department Street Division, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that up to thirty-nine thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring one heavy equipment operator, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from fiscal year two thousand and thirteen Budget Line Items Engineering Department Salary and Wages, Workman's Compensation, Retirement, Life Insurance, Health Insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the Human Resources Department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. Mr. President, I so move.
We have a motion by Council Brown. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Starnes. Any discussion on this item? All in favor signify by raising your right hand. This resolution passes. Resolution number nine is to authorize the hiring of thirty-eight seasonal leisure service employees at a cost not to exceed one hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Council Boone, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville Leisure Services Department has seasonal programs, after-school programs, and sports programs, which require the hiring of seasonal employees, and whereas the fees collected by the Leisure Services Department from these programs will offset the cost of hiring seasonal employees, and whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville has implemented a hiring freeze, and whereas the cost of such workers for the remainder of the budget year will not exceed one hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars for salaries and benefits, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that up to one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars nine hundred and eighty-eight is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring thirty-eight seasonal employees, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the FY two thousand and thirteen Budget Line Items Leisure Services Department Salaries and Wages, Workers' Compensation, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the Human Resources Department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. Mr. President, I so move.
We have a motion by Council Boone. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Brown. Would be any discussion on this item? All in favor signify by raising your right hand. This resolution passes also. Resolution number ten is to authorize the hiring of twelve seasonal urban management employees at a cost not to exceed one hundred thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Council Starnes, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Whereas the City of Prattville Urban Management Department has the need of hiring seasonal employees, and whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville has implemented a hiring freeze, and whereas the cost of such workers for the remainder of the budget year will not exceed one hundred thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars for salaries and benefits, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that up to one hundred thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring twelve seasonal employees, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated for fiscal year two thousand and thirteen Budget Line Items Urban Management Department Salaries and Wages, Workers' Compensation, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the Human Resources Department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Striplin. Would be any discussion? All in favor signify by raising your right hand. This resolution passes. Ordinance number eleven is to surplus one vehicle from the fire department. Council Chambers, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Bid ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama as follows: That the vehicle listed below is hereby declared surplus of the fire department and is to be removed from the inventory of the said department, a two thousand and one Ford Taurus VIN one F A F P five-two-two-nine-one-a-one-eight-five-three-four-five. Be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to sell said vehicle through govdeals.com, and that proceeds be deposited in the general fund. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Starnes. This is an ordinance of permanent nature. This item must have the rules suspended in order to be considered tonight. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
A motion and a second to suspend the rules. All in favor of suspending the rules? Raise your right hand. Rules have been suspended. Would there be any discussion on this item now? All in favor of this ordinance signify by raising your right hand. This ordinance passes. Number twelve is an ordinance to surplus one vehicle from the Leisure Services Department. Council Boone, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama as follows: That the vehicle listed below is hereby declared surplus of the Leisure Services Department and is to be removed from the inventory of said department, nineteen ninety-seven Ford Taurus, VIN number one F A L P five-two-U-six-V A two-one-five-seven-four-nine. Be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to sell said vehicle through govdeals.com, and that proceeds be deposited into the general fund. Mr. President, I so move.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Bowles. This item also would need to have the rules suspended in order to be considered tonight. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion to suspend the rules? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Chambers. All in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand. Rules have been suspended. Would there be any discussion on this item? All in favor of this item signify by raising your right hand. This ordinance passes also. Resolution number thirteen is to amend FY two thousand and thirteen Budget and Award Bid number zero-one-two-dash-double-zero-seven in the amount of ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty cents to Pruitt Communications Incorporated for a voice-over-internet protocol telephone system. Councilor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville has solicited request for information, RFI, for a voice-over-internet protocol VoIP system to replace the current telephone system for the City of Prattville, and whereas twenty-eight bids were let for the City of Prattville for said VoIP system, and whereas five still bids were received, and Pruitt Communications was the lowest responsible bidder with a cost of ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty cents for said VoIP system, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the FY two thousand and thirteen Budget Line Item Information Technology Telephone is hereby decreased by twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars, and that the FY two thousand and thirteen Budget Line Item Information Technology Capital Outlay is increased by twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville that the FY two thousand and thirteen Budget Line Item Information Technology Equipment Maintenance is hereby decreased by seventy thousand dollars, and that the FY two thousand and thirteen Budget Line Item Information Technology Capital Outlay is increased by seventy thousand dollars. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby awards bid number twelve-dash-oh-oh-seven in the amount of ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty cents to Pruitt Communication Incorporated for the V OIP system, and said funds are approved and appropriated from the FY two thousand and thirteen Budget Line Item Technology Capital Outlay. I so move.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Starnes. Be any discussion? Council Chamber?
I'd like to say that I really scrutinized this one because a hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. But as I've gotten into the information and looked at all this, and Doug has helped me with a lot of it, but essentially because we're going from an old Centrix phone system, we're getting rid of a lot of lines. And anyway, the savings over just two years is going to pay for this capital outlay. Am I correct? So after that, that's going to be a huge savings down the road. So I would support this. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I also like to add to that because I had the information before me that the figure that he has given me is approximately thirteen hundred and forty-one dollars per month in savings. So as you can see, we will be benefiting from this. No further discussion. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Resolution passes. Number fourteen is an ordinance to surplus various IT equipment from the Information Technology Department. Council Chambers, will you read that, please?
Yes, sir. Bid ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama as follows: That the items listed in attachment one are hereby declared surplus of the Information Technology Department and are to be removed from the inventory of said department. Be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to scrap said printers, monitors, and computers through the Otoga County PALS Recycling Program. Be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to sell to servers through govdeals.com, and that proceeds be deposited in the general fund. So move, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
This item also would need to have the rules suspended in order to be considered.
So move.
Have a motion by Council Boone. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Striplin. Any discussion? All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Rules have been suspended. Be any discussion on this item? All in, any discussion?
Yes, sir. I'd just like to say that I participate a lot in the PALS group recycling and some of their programs, and they have recently brought in someone new who has a business in Prattville and are supporting local businesses to get recycling going more in our city. And I'm glad to see the city participating in this. I'm glad to see that it's branching out as we are supporting local businesses who are trying to make money off of this. So I fully support this and like to see how it trickles down and back into our economy as it's going to. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by raising your right hand. This item passes. Resolution number fifteen, to express the intent of the City Council to request state legislation to modify the method of abating weed and overgrown properties within the corporate city limits. Councilor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the abundance of overgrown grass or weeds within the municipality is injurious to the public health, safety, and general welfare of its citizens, and whereas Title XI, Chapter sixty-seven of the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, as amended, establishes a process for abandonment of weeds and overgrown properties, and whereas modification to this process for the abandonment of weeds and overgrown properties are necessary to effectively protect the public health, safety, and general welfare of Prattville residents, and whereas the necessary modifications can only be authorized by and through an amendment of the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five adopted by Alabama Legislature, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby request that Representative Paul Beckman and Senator Brian Taylor seek and pass legislation during the two thousand and thirteen regular session and allow the City Council of the City of Prattville to modify the method of abating weeds and overgrown properties within the corporate city limits of the City of Prattville. I so move.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion on this item? Council Bowles?
Yes, sir. I would ask that this is held for two weeks. The actual verbiage of the words were sent to the state legislature for them to write it the way they wanted it, had it back on Thursday, then they asked if they could go back and rewrite it one more time, and I have not received it back. So I am not comfortable as the rest of the board on voting something that we cannot see. So we're asking to hold this for two weeks and bring it back for us at the next council meeting.
Have a motion to hold. Do we have a second?
Motion.
Second.
Second by Council Boone. Any other discussion on this item? All in favor of holding for two weeks signify by raising your right hand. This item will be held for two weeks. That exhausts our agenda items for tonight. At this time, we have comments from persons present on any other item that you would like to discuss with the City Council. Please come forward at this time. Mayor, do you have any closing comments?
Yes, sir. Just a few. Next Wednesday evening, WSFA will be holding a severe weather event here for our citizens to come down. And if they have any weather radar, weather radios, they'll be glad to help have them set up. If you can join us here at five P.M., City Hall would be great. Also, just a little tidbit, if we have any sci-fiers out there, the Sci-Fi Network is actually in town filming a premiere episode for the brand-new, for one of their brand-new shows. I think it's an honor for them to showcase Prattville positively for their national network. And talking with some of the director and some of his staff, they say that normally after they leave town and the event shows, usually tourism increases double or three times. So just a little tidbit of information in case you see any unique-looking people around our Pratt gin over here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Striplin?
Yes, sir.
Council Brown?
Yes, sir.
Council Starnes?
Yes, sir.
Council Chambers?
Move.
Council Bowles?
Yes, sir. Just want to say to Officer Wayne Barlow, I know he's already left, but we love your, we love your dog. Really appreciate everything that he's done up for the community over the years, giving him a lot of carpet for his back of his truck. I'm gonna miss seeing him come by the store once a month. And I would ask that we look into replacing him as fast as possible. He's been great for our community, and would love to see us continue that tradition in the city as long as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Boone.
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for coming again tonight. I would like to call a finance committee meeting for this Thursday at three P.M. If that's too early, please notify me, those members of the finance committee, for this coming Thursday at three P.M. Again, thank you all for coming. Next council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February nineteenth, six P. here in, in council chambers. We have a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. We adjourn.